Evening, everybody. We're officially starting the zoning border appeals meeting today, January 7th, 2025, 7:00 p.m. If we can have a roll call, please.
Member Payers? Member Marcy? Member Gilbane?
Present.
Member Christopher?
Yeah.
Member Maggio? Member Olson?
Present.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Present.
Member Kravitz, absent.
Following up from last year's meeting, final meeting, are there any edits or any changes to the minutes? So now, do I hear a motion for approving the minutes as is?
Motion approved.
All right, we have a second. Second, all those in favor.
Aye.
We're first gonna move with voting you officers. It's a new year, so we're gonna tackle this point first and any agenda and then move through the cases. We have chairman, vice chairman, and clerk positions open. We're gonna start with chairman. Are there any nominations for the chairman?
I'll make a motion to nominate Ibrahim Lopez Hernandez as chairman.
All right, any other nominations? All right, I accept the nomination.
All in favors?
And all in favors of that nomination, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have vice chair, opening up for nominations for vice chair. I move for nominating.
I'll nominate member Terry.
All right, Terry Kravitz, member Kravitz. All those in favor for member Kravitz to vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then finally, we have clerk open for nominations. I would move that Mr. Olson be our clerk. So nominating for that decision. Everybody in favor of that nomination, say aye.
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 All right. Get that with that point. Now we're gonna move with our continued cases from previous meetings, and we have case number 10092. Mr. Olson, do you have a reading?
Yep. Case number 10092, formerly 5 Neptune Street Court, 123 South Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. Apostle number 036776033. The petitioner, Thomas McGovern, president of Lynwood Development, Inc., owner under agreement, Marblehead, Mass. by his attorney, Samuel A. Vitale. To vary pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 10, the provisions of the city's own ordinance to allow construction of a single-family dwelling on a 3,115 square foot corner lot in the R4 district with on-site parking as required. The lot has 80.13 feet of frontage along Neptune Street Court, and all other required dimensional regulations are satisfied as shown on the submitted certified plot plan. Single-family homes require 10,000 square feet of land, 75 feet of frontage, 10 feet front setback, seven and a half foot side setback, and 15 foot rear setback. The variance request requires the zoning border appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such antinor structures but not affecting generally the zoning districts which is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. And before opening up to continuing the case, we did receive a communication from councilman Hogan, Ward 6. If we can have a reading of that letter. That's a three and a half word, but actually, that's it.
It says, "Dear Vice Chairman Lopez Hernandez, as you are aware, I am the duly elected Ward 6 Consul of the City of Lynn. I have reviewed the plans regarding the above referenced petition and fully support the construction of a single-family home on this property. At one time, there existed two separate lots with a structure on both lots. Prior to 1975, there was actually a six-family home on the property at 5 Neptune Street Court. This property use of a single family is significantly a less intense of a use as the prior six-family on this undersized lot. Allowing a variance for a single-family home will provide the city with much-needed housing and will not conflict with the existing character of the neighborhood. As there exists sufficient on-site parking, I do not believe that there will be any negative impacts on the immediate neighborhood. The petitioner has a proven track record of construction-quality projects. Finally, I have heard no opposition from abutters to this property. I would respectfully urge the zoning border appeals to act favorably on this position. Thank you for your consideration in this manner. Retool yard's Frederick Hogan, Ward 6 Consul."
Fred Vitale, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How much are you gonna say about Vitale? With me is Tom McGovern of Lynwood Development. Council Hogan pretty succinctly described the the seeking, but let me give you some of the background. This property is a corner lot, so it has two fronts, one on South Street, one on Neptune Street Court. The lots have existed since 1891, and I brought copies of the recorded plan from the Registry of Deeds that show the two separate lots. A house was built on each of the lots before the option is on, in the early 1900s. A single-family home was built on the Neptune Street Court parcel. A six-family home was built on the 123 South Street parcel. It continued that way until, as the Consul indicated, in 1975, in the six-family dwelling, that was demolished. That is at 123 South Street. The properties in the R4 apartment house district, which requires 50 feet of frontage, is 80 feet along Neptune Street Court. And with respect to the relief that we're seeking, it is the lot size with respect to the 3,000-plus square foot lot that once had the six-family dwelling on it. One of the attributes of the city's record-keeping is that it does reflect, and I wanted to give you property Z's well. This is the city directory from 1926 that shows six families at 123 South Street. And lies that shows the single-family dwelling on Neptune Street Court. The building is demolished. On South Street Court. Such a quantity there. The city continued to recognize the parcels as separate lots. And this is the Neptune Street Court. And why I say that is I have with me the street listing from the 2000s that show that South Street lies assessed as developed or rented in the lot. Neptune Street Court just assessed as a single-family dwelling. And that's what they did in the street listings. I also want you to note that the house, as the Consul indicated, at 123, had been torn down in 1975. This is the 2003 street listing that lists both, and I also have the assessors map that goes shows the the two separate lots. So the only relief we're really seeing is the lot size for the lot that once was 123 South. As far as the front setback, the two fronts. The footnote that deals with front setback says that you have to have 10 feet of a front setback, or you have to have 10 feet from the inside sidewalk line, or from the adjacent property. So I have a plot plan of 119 South Street, and I have a plot plan of nine Neptune Court that show that neither of those properties have a 10-foot front setback. And in fact, the front setback, as proposed here, exceeds the usual progress, so it's definitely satisfying that requirement. They have two on-site parking spaces, which is what's required in a single-family dwelling. What did arise is a question in, up until nearly 2000, there were individual owners. There was a foreclosure on one of those owners. And the bank, which I think was East Boston City, sold off the two parcels to the current owner, who has an agreement with Mr. McGovern, to sell the property that is subject of the request for relief. And that description I brought with me from the bank indicates the two parcels, and it references, and this is why I handed out the assessors map. If you look at this description of the two parcels that I've highlighted, you'll see that it references Assessors Map 25, which is which likewise shows a corner lot. So the lots, as you can see from the plot plan that we submitted, by Mr. Reed and from Reed's assessors plan, are irregular-shaped lots. Reed is not here, she's not the owner of the picture. I think it's demolished, because they have done it themselves. With respect to the lots, they've been in that comfort state for a long period of time. And as the Consul said quite well, obviously, the single living is more out in the streets of single-family dwellers. If some of you see this number down in the floor, it is built many city dwellings in the city of Lynn, and that's what he proposed us to do with your approval. I'd be glad to answer questions of any member.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vitale. Opening it up for any questions, comments from board.
Just clarifying, it's been taxed as a single-family lot? Is it taxed as a single-family lot or two lots, just to clarify?
They're in the R4 district, which allows least intensive use of any residential use in the R4 district as a single-family. There is an existing single-family
Yeah.
on the Neptune Street Court side, a vacant lot on the 123 South Street.
So it's, both of them, both lots have been taxed separately, or?
They were until the assessors, current assessors combined them. And I think we talked about this before. It's a common, if you own lot A and lot B,
Right.
they'll send you one deal for C.
Right.
But the common law doctrine merger, subject to the local zoning ordinance, and the local zoning ordinance says that in the definition of a lot, that it's a lot if it's used or intended, I can read you the definition, because you can look at it. Or if the owner intends, they didn't really need to say. A parcel when used or set aside or available for the use of one or more buildings. So in an apartment house district, you can have, and you've had cases where two buildings on the lot in the apartment house district. This is not that case.
Right.
And so the only use has been since the six-family got torn down, was the single-family. But the lot that fronts on South Street is a lot. We're interested in putting another single-family.
Okay. Thank you for that, sir.
Any other questions from the board? All right. So we'll, thank you, Mr. Vitale. We'll move then to anybody else in favor of the petition that would like to express any comments. All right. We'll be closing that and move then to anybody opposed to the petition that would like to speak. All right. So we move to the board. All right. I have a second from Mr. Maggio. Member Maggio.
Member Payers, to grant?
Motion granted.
Member Christopher to grant?
Yes.
Member Maggio to grant?
Yes.
Member Olson to grant?
Yes, to grant.
And member Lopez Hernandez to grant?
Yes, to grant. All right, Terry Kravitz. Thank you. Have a good night. Next, we'll be following up with case number 10094.
New case, Zero Circle Avenue, Lynn, Massachusetts, parcel number 034752027. Petitioner, Perry Linway LLC, care of A.W. Perry, Inc., 21th Street Square, Boston, Mass. By his attorney, James D. Moore, CBA 10094. To vary pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 10, the provisions of the city Lynn zoning ordinance to allow the use of the property for commercial vehicles and equipment, which is defined as the storage of commercial vehicles and equipment, tractors, trailers, motor vehicles used for delivery and distribution, buses, shuttle buses, commuter vans, storage of materials and short-term lay-down space for material used in roads or building construction. Petitioners shall modify a variance approval granted to the zoning border appeals in case 999 by amending the decision for which stated granted with stipulation, three-year term, allowed to come back before the board for renewal to read granted with stipulation that maximum lease term for any tenant is three years, and variance is in effect until May 1st, sorry, May 11th, 2030. The variance request requires the zoning border appeals to specifically find that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Attorney Moore, would you like to give a few words on the petition?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is James Moore. I'm an attorney at law at the offices at 85 Exchange Street in Lynn. On April 2nd, 2022, this board granted the petitioner a variance to allow for the use of the vacant property on Circle Avenue for commercial vehicles as set out in the original petition. And this board entered a decision which read as follows. Three-year term lease allowed to come back before the board for renewal. The petitioner is now asking that the board modify the original decision both to clarify the original language on lease terms and to extend the term of the original variance for five years, suggesting that a decision to allow the modification be issued by the board as follows. Granted with stipulation that minimum lease term for any tenant is three years, and variance is in effect until May 11th, 2030. Before filing for the modification of the variance, the petitioner was asked to speak at the City of Lynn Development Board to discuss the status of the development of their parcels, including the existing buildings which front only on the Linway, as well as the status of future development of the mostly vacant parcel which fronts on Circle Avenue and which is the subject of this petition. The Development Board met meeting concluded on Tuesday, September 17th, and a subsequent meeting was held with city officials to deter the disgust, future development of the central Circle Avenue property. Result of those meetings was a petition in front of you tonight seeking clarification of the three-year lease, so that it reads maximum term for any tenant is three years, and that the original three-year term of the variance be extended for an additional five years and read variance in effect until May 11th, 2030. Respectfully submitted. Be happy to address any questions about the mechanics of this particular petition, and if there are any, if there are, if there are none. Mr. Bob Maloney from Perry Linway LLC is here to talk for a couple of minutes about more important things than the actual project itself. Have any questions about the mechanics of the procedure?
Is it, is it currently leased, I assume, and being used? And is the whole property leased by one lesser?
I'm gonna let Bob answer that question.
Are there multiple uses of the property?
So you can give us your name and address real quick for the record.
Absolutely. My name is Bob Maloney. I'm with A.W. Perry. We're the owners of the property. We, four years ago, last week, we bought the property, which includes the two buildings along the Linway and the 10 acres of land out behind on Circle Ave. To answer your question, we have leases to three different tenants on the land, the 10 acres, yes.
And are they fenced off or portioned differently?
So the entire site is fenced off along Circle Ave and around the perimeter. And, but the tenants inside the fence are leasing the space basically as tenants in common. So they have, we have delineated their spaces with Jersey barriers, et cetera. But they haven't insisted on security inside there, inside the fence, other than what the fence provides.
Yeah, okay. And what is their, their storing vehicles, commercial vehicle, what's the typical use of some tenants?
So we have, our largest tenant is a company that does business with Amazon. They accept delivery of brand-new Amazon Sprinter vans, and they prepare them for use on the road. They put license plates on them. They make sure there's air in the tires and gas in the tanks, and as Amazon asks for delivery, Amazon will either come and pick up the vans from our site, or our tenant will deliver vans to specific sites, and then Amazon puts those vehicles in service. Once they leave our site, we don't, they don't come back, so they're not maintaining.
So they're just staging for permanent places?
Exactly.
Yeah.
They have another tenant.
The other two tenants?
We have another tenant who actually leases space in our vehicle, our truck maintenance facility, and stores vehicles waiting for maintenance on about a half an acre of the land out back. And then the third tenant is actually master leases about three acres from us, and then subleases to folks, many of whom live here in Lynn, who own tractor-trailers and have no place to park their vehicles at night. So they leave their homes, they drive over to our site, they park their cars there during the day, pick up their tractor-trailers and go about their business during the day, and then return their vehicles to our site at night.
Okay, so they're vehicles that are on the road?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments from board members?
How long ago was this decision rendered by this board, the original one? Was this original decision rendered?
Three years ago in 2018.
It's a copy right there.
So it'll be three years, this coming April?
So if I may, our intention with the 10 acres, the 10-acre site is land on which Gorilic Farms used to park their trucks and actually drop their trailers and had the ability to plug their trailers into electric posts on the site. Those were refrigerator trailers, so if they had, if they had goods inside the trailers, they could park, plug their trailers in and keep the refrigeration running overnight. So there's a history there of Gorilic using it for truck parking, but our intention is to redevelop that 10 acres, and remains that to this day, but with the increase in interest rates and the downturn in the leasing market, since we petitioned for the first variance, we're asking to extend that variance until such time as redevelopment of the site makes economic sense, but that doesn't, that isn't the case today.
Is that why the increase from three to five years?
Yes.
What would you like that, the partial?
Ideally, we'd love to build some kind of a, you know, there's all kinds of new technologies and real estate facilities that are being built throughout the, throughout Massachusetts, throughout eastern Massachusetts, and to either, either for for clean manufacturing, be that medical devices or pharmaceuticals or whatever. I think this would be an ideal site for such a facility, but the market for that right now doesn't exist today. There's a lot of lab space that's available. It's already been built, and until that space is absorbed, we don't expect that we'll be able to build a facility on our site until such time as, you know, the market is back in equilibrium. So in the meantime, this will help us, the revenue that we'll have be able to earn from leasing this to contractors or to the tenants that we have there now will help us to continue to improve the buildings along the Linway. And if you're familiar with what those buildings looked like when we bought them and what they look like today, I hope you can all appreciate that we've, we have been taking the money that we've been able to generate from the leases on that land and been able to put it into the buildings and improve the buildings themselves and the site, the visibility, the looks of the buildings from the Linway. So we still hold out hope. More than hope, it's our intention to redevelop the site eventually, but we, in the meantime, to continue to be able to lease them for contractor space or truck parking will enable us to continue to put money back into the, back into the property.
Do you, do you have provisions in your lease terms, like what they can use the property for?
Yes, well, we're limited to what they can use the property for by zoning. And we also insist on any leases that would go longer than two years, that we have the right to terminate a lease when and if we have the opportunity to redevelop the site.
I know the original approval suggested storage of materials.
Correct.
Does that, are those materials defined in your lease?
It's, by materials, we had always intended that those would be construction materials, so lay-down space for contractors who we, who need that type of space. Although we have no contractors leasing space in our yard now, we have, over the course of the past four years while we've owned the property, have had discussions with some contractors who do have either a need for temporary three months, for instance, or a year-long need for places to store equipment or materials while they have a job in the area.
So the only thing I would probably ask is, if any materials are stored that could be sort of washed out from rainwater or runoff, just be covered with a tarp or whatever, just so. It doesn't create a nuisance for the waterways and the adjacent.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so we haven't put those restrictions on. Usually, the contractors and tenants themselves would naturally want to protect whatever it is they're storing on the site. But if that's something you'd like to see in our leases, we're happy to provide for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Any other?
Yep. Is there a reason, oh, I'm sorry. You sure? Is there a reason why you ask?
Is there a reason why you asked for five years this time instead of three, besides just wanting to have extra time?
Well, it was partly so that we could avoid having to come back every three years, but we have had discussions with a few tenants who would have, are looking for longer-term leases, as many as five years. Again, if we were to sign a lease like that with a tenant, we would put a provision in there that says if we have the opportunity and are ready to redevelop the site, we would have the right to terminate that lease if so, but that would help us from being precluded from that tenant's list of potential places to lease space if we can provide them up to a four- or five-year lease.
Big success. Can a member, Maggio?
Yeah, do we have any comments or kind of conversations from either the mayor or the development team regarding just the lease, because I know there is a whole, like, water plant, so does that impact it in any way?
I seem to recall that there was something originally to allow them to buy time to be able to do that, is how I remembered it.
So it's not within the next five years?
I guess not the more reason.
Originally, they had said something, but they didn't say that for this meeting, yeah, they did say so, but not for this meeting.
Similarly, the same that the district has been drawn up and the intentions of the city are to redevelop it.
Yeah.
But how that goes about on a parcel-by-parcel basis, then probably takes time. But if we have any questions on that end, you can also ask Derek Lawson for any extra information on this issue. Any other questions to the petitioner from the board?
Are the, any of the Lynn Way parcels leased at this time? Do you have tenants in there, or is it still being leased?
Yes, thank you for asking. So we're proud of the work we've been doing. So the large building, six-twenty-six Lynn Way, which was the Gorilic Farms, actually their bottling plant, and they did a lot of things in there, and included sixty thousand square feet of cold storage space. So it was a bottling, it was a dairy processing plant, they pasteurized and homogenized dairy products. They actually fabricated the bottles, the plastic jugs in that facility. They bottled them there, and then they had sixty thousand square feet of cold storage where they stored goods until they were shipped out to market. So we now have one tenant whose space we have built out, twenty-five thousand square feet of space that we have built out for that one tenant. We have a second tenant who we are currently in the process of building out their space. So we have Wash Cycle, who's a twenty-five thousand square foot commercial laundry operator. We're building out space for a company called Global Protection Corp. They've leased forty-five thousand square feet from us that we're currently building out, and then they've now just recently signed a lease addendum that adds another twenty thousand square feet of warehouse space to their premises. So they will now have sixty-five thousand square feet of space leased in that, in the big building. And then there is the freestanding forty-five thousand square foot warehouse building at six-eighty Lynn Way, to whom we leased all of the warehouse space, forty-one thousand square feet of warehouse space, to Sky Chefs, who does a lot of the culinary and other products for the airlines at Logan Airport.
And for the Circle Ave, when it does come time to redevelop that, is there going to be any environmental remediation needed before you can move forward with that?
Yes, so that is, the ten acres is actually part of the former City of Lynn landfill. It was closed and capped in the nineteen eighties. So we continue to maintain and report to the state on the amount of methane gas coming out of the, out of the site, and, but it is reaching the point where the methane gases is kind of, the readings of the methane gas have decreased to the point where the state is almost ready to have us only report every five years. So we will have to, there are challenges to the site. As with any landfill, to build on the site, we will have to drill piles down through the former landfill until we can find bedrock or something that we can grab onto. Any building built on the site will have to be supported by a full slab, structural slab, supported by piles, slab on grade. And there's really, to the best we've been able to tell through our testing of what's underneath the cap, it is truly domestic refuse, but you never know. When you're drilling piles, we could find a fifty-five gallon drum, but we have no reason to believe there are any under there right now.
Thanks. I have one question. The parcel abuts the portion of the landfill that is intended to be redeveloped into open space by the city, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. Is there any intention in terms of the tenants or property owner to work with the city, or are there any plans, or has the city asked to create a vegetative buffer or something on that portion that faces so that people enjoy it in the future, the open space, walking around, and however the design is, that that collision between land uses isn't as stark?
Sure. Thank you for your question. In fact, we contributed three-quarters of an acre of land that we granted an easement to the, to the city, or to that, to the park, the creation of the park. So three-quarters of an acre of our land at the very back corner, which is on the other side of, there now currently exists across our site, high-power lines. So the triangular-shaped parcel that's on the other side of the power lines from our buildings, and that abuts the park, is land that we granted an easement to the city for the creation of that park. The city during those conversations never asked us for any kind of a buffer or vegetation area, although the, the power lines do somewhat act as a buffer, because we can't build underneath those lines, and the park ends on the other side of those power lines. So there's about, I want to say it's about a fifty-foot-wide buffer between the end of our buildable site and the beginning of the park.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Are there any other questions, and I think that we can move on with anybody else who would like to speak on behalf in favor of the petitioner. Thank you very much for your words.
I'd like to speak in favor. My name is Gerardo Raphael, seventy-seven Alley Street, Lynn, Mass. And as you know, a lot of small businesses, landscapers, attritions, plumbers cannot park in their yards due to city and town ordinances in this area. And as times gone on, and land's getting scarce in this area, and there's been a lot of more development of apartments and things like that, and they're getting pushed out and ticketed, and, and it's really hurting small businesses. There's hundreds of small businesses in Lynn that need a place to go, and unfortunately, they can't park in their backyard. And as you know, people do the extreme in parking private properties, like you see on Boston Street in Lynn, they park dump trucks and trash vehicles, trailer trucks, and things like that. They're not supposed to be in there because they have no place to go. So please take into consideration any commercial property that can help a small business. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody here against the petition, questions or comments? Right? Seeing nothing.
Motion to grant with a stipulation that materials stored that could run off during a rain event, a stormwater event, be covered.
All right.
It could be simple as a top, so.
I would also add an additional stipulation, Mr. Olson, if you're open to it, on a commandment from the owner, that if there are any leases that are over two years, which would trigger, as mentioned, that provision of being on the right to be able to cancel that if the opportunity for redevelopment happens, to just let us know that that is happening to the CBA, give it a notification that that specific legal agreement happened, just as an FYI to the board.
Accepting that commandment.
Given that, I would like to.
Second it.
Second the motion.
All right, Mr. Lo, um.
Uh, we had, or at least.
Member Paez to grant with the stipulations. Member Maggio to grant?
Yes, to grant.
Member Christopher to grant?
Yes.
Member Olson to grant?
Yes, with stipulations, to grant.
And Member Lopez Hernandez to grant?
Yes, to grant the stipulations. All right.
Thank you. Yep, well done.
Can you write me those what you've already done?
Yeah.
Thank you. I kind of wrote it, but I want to make sure I'm right. Thank you.
All right. So now we will move with our final case here, case number one-zero-zero-nine-five.
Thirty-seven Bird Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. Parcel number zero-nine-six-four-seven-one-zero-one-zero.
Hi, good afternoon.
Petitioner Ivan Lopez, seventy-nine Lakeview Avenue, Lynn, Massachusetts. To vary pursuant to Master General Law Chapter thirty, Section ten, the provisions of the City of Lynn's own ordinance to allow the conversion of a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling in the R-one single-family residential district without sufficient on-site parking. The two-family dwelling requires seventy-five feet of frontage, where the subject property only has fifty feet of frontage and twelve thousand square feet of land, where the subject property has only four thousand five hundred square feet of land, and the two-family dwelling further requires one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit, seven and a half feet of side setbacks and a maximum building area of thirty percent. The mayor's request requires the zoning board appeals to specifically find that owing to the circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape of the park, or free of such land or structures, and especially affecting such indoor structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance. To permit, I guess, is this repeated?
Attorney Lamanna, these are two different per, or is it two different ones?
It's a different, yeah.
Has to be read, too.
Okay. To permit, so continuing to permit pursuant to Master General Law Chapter the conversion of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling into the two-family dwelling in the R-one single-family zoning district, finding that such use is not substantially more detrimental than the current use to Master General Law Chapter forty, section six. A two-family dwelling requires seventy-five feet of frontage, where the subject property has only fifty feet and twelve thousand square feet of land, where the subject property has only forty-five hundred square feet of land. A two-family dwelling further requires one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit, seven and a half feet of side setbacks, and a maximum building area of thirty percent. Master General Law Chapter forty, Section six states, "Pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the permit-granting authority that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood."
Thank you, Mr. Olson. If you can give us a few words and give us your name and address, please.
How's it going? Good evening. My name is Ivan Lopez. I have been a resident of Lynn for the last eight years. I currently own a three-family in Lakeview Avenue, and I just recently purchased thirty-seven Bird Street from a lady that was going through some medical situations, and she wasn't able to inhabit that property because it was difficult for her to, I guess, the simple term is, she couldn't go up and down the stairs as often, so we decided to give her an easy way out and purchase the property from her and give her a new location that eases her situation. Upon obtaining the property, we realized that the layout of the property was, was perfect for an opportunity to convert it into a two-family, and that's our intention today. We, it was originally a two-family, I believe in nineteen twenties. This property was probably built around the nineteen hundreds, and we just want to see if, you know, if we would get permission to be able to re-convert it into it. The property right now currently, we were, we spoke to Mr. Poole, and one of his biggest concerns was parking, which is one of the biggest concerns that we have for the property. We weren't able to provide an additional parking for another unit because of the layout of the property. If we were to dig, it's, right now it sits on top of a hill. If we were to dig more to the left side, plumbing was sort of involved, water and, and gas, and the cost of it would have been way more than, than the potential value of the property in the long run as well. Both floors, it's a, it's a two fam, it's a two-floor property. Both floors are equal in amounts of space, and they're, they're very similar in, in the way that they're structured, which makes it perfect for a potential two-bedroom unit, roughly around nine-hundred-and-eighty square feet. And, you know, we just, we would like the permission to be able to convert it into a two-family if possible. We do have a list of other properties as well under this R-one zone. We have thirty properties pretty much in total within that street. Out of those thirty, sixteen have been converted into three or two families, providing either the same amount of space of parking or less than, and, and we wanted to at least bring that up as well to, for you to know that most, most of our neighbors are two and three families as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? My question is currently there's only one parking space for a single-family?
Yes. It's about one, one and a half.
From the plans that I'm looking at, is there going to be a change of the building footprint? Is the actual building going to be changing?
So we have, I believe we sent him two different types, one that wasn't, wasn't stamped and one that was. The original layout was going to be a little bit different, providing the bedroom in the, in the beginning, in the front part of the, of the building. One of those was going to be converted into a bedroom. When we actually started to design the layout, sort of, you know, making, we put a couple stencils of wood to see what the distance would be, it would take out too much space from that potential bedroom, making it less than, I guess.
Nick Hanses, Hanses and Son Home Information, sixty-one, Old Coach, Arkansas, New Hampshire. I moved to the city here back in seventy-two, a longtime resident. My family's still here in the city. I'm the contractor on this project, Ivan. And on the second floor, what we deemed to do was to take out from the front room, which would have been a sitting room, to make that into a bedroom, and to get the forty inches that we would need for hallway space, so that we do have a, two methods of egress, front egress and a rear egress, which are existing. The room size would not meet the International Building Code for bedroom, so we scrapped that idea. And what we're looking to do now is just to, basically, the way that the house was originally built, eighteen ninety, nineteen hundreds, is this two-family, where you would have a front living room, one bedroom, a dining room, and a rear kitchen with a rear bathroom. So we're keeping those same ideas and designs in process, but we're getting rid of the dining room, making it a second bedroom, with a hallway in between the two, and we still have the, the front egress with the front stairs and this secondary egress with the rear stairs.
So you guys are going to change the layout in the footprint? You're not like.
That's correct, yeah. There's no additional construction to be done outside of what is existing on the building itself.
It looks like there's a two egress.
Yes, there is. You have the front door on the front side of the building and then on the rear right side is where the, the rear hallway is and rear stairway.
Can you explain the demo of the existing driveway retaining walls?
Yes. Those work. If you look on Google Earth, you'll see that the existing wall, when it was cut out and constructed at the time, whoever did it did not construct it properly. There was no drainage behind the walls, no crushed stone, no felt fabric. The cinder blocks that were, it was used to made up with, were not filled with concrete, were not set with rebar reinforcements in between any of the cells. So basically they heaved inwards on the left side and the rear side, the left and right side. The rear side held up and the very last top four feet was wooden timbers, landscaping timbers. So what we did is we completely removed the left and the right walls over the existing footings that were there in place, pinned in new rebar and rebuilt it with cinder block with the same style which is in the rear part of the wall and tied it in.
So it's the same footprint, using the same footing?
Yes. We extended it a little bit more, like a foot on each side in order to provide adequate space for the now vehicles, because before it probably fit like a nineteen sixties Volkswagen.
Yeah. The width of it originally was around nine to ten feet. We've got it close to twelve now, eleven and a half feet.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it looked a little bit.
Yeah, but it is on the, the existing footings that were there.
Yep.
When we excavated out. And we have four inch perforated draining pipe on either side, on the, the left and right walls with a foot of, a foot distance going back from the wall of three quarter crushed stone for drainage all the way up to the very top. And then we included on the rear wall, once again, we excavated back and put in perforated pipe, tied it into the right side wall and put in the three quarter stone for drainage. And all the cinder block has been pinned into either the footing or the original blocks.
So for the, for the new stairs, it looked like those are being replayed. Are those concrete stairs?
No, no, those are pressure treated stairs.
Okay. All the way down to the side, back and side?
Right. What we've done is because the front of the walkway was about thirty-six inches.
It looked like there's a retained wall?
Yeah. Yeah. What we've done now is we extended the, the front of the property. So this way here, we have a proper retaining wall.
Yeah.
Proper footing. So this way here, fiery, massive police need to get into, into the area. Everybody's not bunched up into a small area, three foot wide. And then this way here, tenants moving personal property in and out can do it safely in, in an economical design manner.
Yeah, it looks like a better layout.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, or thoughts?
Am I getting this right? Is the, is there an existing kitchen on the second floor or?
No, no, there's no, no existing kitchen. Two layouts look exactly identical, but the kitchen was remaining on the first floor.
Yeah, right. And so. The, the owners that Mr. Lopez purchased the property from had the second floor used as bedrooms. There is a full bath with cub on the second floor as there is on the first floor. They had their laundry provisions on the, in the basement. And what we've done is we've reconfigured it so that it's off the second floor bedroom. Oh, excuse me, second floor bathroom.
All right. There aren't any other questions? Thank you for the overview of the petition. Anybody here in favor of the petition case? Anybody here against? Doesn't seem like it. What's the wish of the board?
I think a motion to grant petition.
Do we have a second on the petition, on the motion? I'll second that. Let's remember Maggio on this, please.
Um, yes.
Yes. Second from Member Maggio. And have the robe on, please.
Member Gilwayne to grant? Yes. Member Peter to grant? Christopher to grant? Member Maggio to grant? Member Olson to grant?
Yes, to grant.
And Lopez Hernandez to grant?
Yes, to grant. All right, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just get your, your name, please?
I think we have one under new business that we got here regarding twenty-six Farrar Street, case that we had had previously, case number nine nine six. We have a letter from Attorney Vitale. I'm just going to read it real quick for a little bit.
Thank you.
Your Vice Chairman Lopez and members, on behalf of the petitioner, has based office at LC, Jessica Rosenberg requests a for six month extension for exercise of the variance granted by the board, although the hearing occurred on April fifth, twenty twenty-two, and the petition was approved. An appeal was filed in the Essex County Superior Court, Lawrence, MA, docket two two seven seven CB zero zero four zero six. The appeal was dismissed with prejudice on February fifth, twenty twenty-four. The petitioner needs additional time to undertake construction and accordingly asks for an extension of time.
This one's a little bit unusual. It dates back to April of twenty twenty-two and as I indicated, there was a court appeal of the board's decision. That appeal ultimately resolved itself and I was able to record both the certificate of judgment and the decision last February. We record the decision because that makes it effective. Ordinarily have one year from the date of approval to exercise it, but we couldn't approve it because there had been the appeal. So the second part of the unusual part of this is that in between, usually I'm the one that urges people, and, and maybe that's part of the reason I'm here. I had sent a notice to my clients that even though I had recorded the decision and it was effective, it had to be exercised. In the interim, November twenty of this year, past year, the governor signed a bill that became law that says that anything that was in effect or approved between January first, twenty twenty-three and January first, twenty twenty-five, by law is extended for two years. But, but my people are concerned because of the language of that statute in terms of when they got their approval. So they'd rather be safe than sorry. That's why I'm here. I, I may have a different opinion than they, but I have to do what they want. So we're going to begin construction. This is a project that had affordable housing before HoloFalls Inclusionary Zoning was part of the City of Lynn's own ordinance. And it got resolved, as I say, in the court, and they want to proceed with construction. And to be safe, they just wanted to get the extension on the record.
Thank you.
But what's the amount you're asking for? How much longer? Six months, six months, you said?
Six months.
Okay.
The board has the authority to extend an approval for six months.
Okay. Thank you.
The statute that the governor signed didn't change your authority.
Right.
I have a question for Attorney Lamanna. Since an original constitution of the board was the one who oversigned and approved, there is no issue with the current to be able to determine on this? Right. Is there a motion?
Yeah, motion to extend the six months.
I'll second that.
Member Gilwayne? Yes. Member Maggio?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Christopher?
Yes.
And member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes.
Thank you. If there's nothing else.
Hope you enjoy your journey.
Hope you enjoy your journey. Seconded all of the city.
Aye.